Good evening. I would like to call the December 1st Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to point out that this meeting is being hosted through livestream on the city's website, and would like to point out that this meeting, oh, I'm sorry, and by teleconference for public comment. Due to the structure of this meeting, I would like to remind the Planning Commission to have their microphones turned on and positioned so the audience can hear.
Good evening. I'd just like to explain that Vice Chair Worth is absent with notice today, so we have to, per Robert's Rule of Order, we have to present and participate in a question that will be elected just for this meeting as the chair pro temp for the Planning Commission meeting. So do I have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Van Arsdale for the pro-chair temp.
December 1st meeting only?
For the December 1st meeting.
I'll second that.
Great. Can I get a roll call vote? Mr. Beemsterfer?
Aye.
Ms. Limkey?
Aye.
Ms. Van Arsdale?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes.
Thank you for making it only for this meeting. So, do you want me to review this, or do you consider what you just did, reviewing it? Okay. Just as a reminder, in accordance, before I do that, I would like to welcome Cindy Limkey, our new Planning Commissioner, to the Planning Commission. Very excited to have her. She runs that Chamber of Commerce with a great iron fist and does a great job in the community, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
So, in accordance with the Governor's Declaration of Emergency for the State of California and the Governor's Stay-at-Home Order, the City of Hemet is providing alternative measures for the public to attend and view Planning Commission meetings. You can be in person, which we're glad to have you if you're here. And also, we have spots out there marked so that you can maintain social distancing. The livestream meeting also, and it will be livestreamed on the city's website. Go to hemmetca.gov/agenda. If you're on, you know you've been there already. Public comments. Members of the public who wish to comment on matters before the commission in lieu of attending in person may submit comments on or before 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by using the online comment form. Comments will be recorded in the official means records. Teleconference residents may also submit public comment by teleconference during the communications from the public by using the following teleconference number, 888-585-9008, and when prompted, dial 743-463-604. Please mute your phone when not providing comment. The teleconference line will be deactivated after the public comments have been provided. We appreciate your understanding during this unprecedented time of social distancing under safer at-home orders. These procedures may be modified in the future as Sotochol and public gatherings protocol change. Thank you. Okay. We officially call to order. Do you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Beemsterfer?
Here.
Commissioner Limkey?
Here.
Commissioner Van Arsdale?
Here.
And Vice Chair Worth is absent with notice.
So, the next thing we will do is the invocation of flags. Lord, let's do the invocation first. Lord, we ask you to guide and direct us as we are making our way through these tumultuous times, trying to make good and thoughtful decisions for the City of Hemet with knowledge and awareness that the things that we do here will affect lives for many, many generations to come. Please help us to be confident and directed, and also please keep all of us safe, and our families safe and together and healthy. Through thy name, amen. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and Mr. Chang, if you want to say something?
Oh, no, no, that's okay. So, I'd like to introduce Cindy Limkey. She's been newly appointed as the Planning Commissioner, and she lives in the City of Hemet. She's been here for 35 years, and she has been involved in many, many different boards and services, including Kiwanis Club, the John R. Williams Scholarship Foundation, and the Menifee Chamber Board of Directors. She's presently here as the Executive Director for the Hemet Sinus Center Valley Chamber of Commerce. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, for joining us, being willing. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our prior meeting. Question for you. We have two members. That is still okay to go forward because she would have to abstain because she wasn't here?
If you feel more comfortable to continue the item, we're more than happy to it. Then you're able to vote on it?
We are able to vote on it. Okay. They weren't complicated, so would you like...
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the 5A from the November 3rd, 2020 meeting.
I will second it because I was also here. Okay. Normally, the chair doesn't second. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. Please vote.
We used the voting machine?
Cindy, the voting machine, you just push a button, 1 for yes, 2 for no, and 3 for abstain.
This one?
Mm-hmm. Oh, 2, you're right.
I'm sorry.
Oh. I can't see sometimes over this mask. Things get... Okay. Next, we have to the public comment period. If there's anybody that has anything that they'd like to comment on that is not on the agenda, we've made some temporary changes for this part of the agenda in order to comply with COVID-19. There's a temporary 2-minute-per-person time limit for all general public comments on non-public hearing items. All who wish to speak, including Commissioners and staff, need to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members of the public shall comply with the adopted rules of decorum, Resolution 4545, a copy of which you can request at the city clerk's office, and you may also fill out a form to submit your comments online at hemmetca.gov/councilchamberslive, and they will be read aloud. So, middle must be done before 2:00 p.m. if you wish to submit this way. For those of you who wish to join by teleconferencing, will be able to join by calling 888-585-9008, and when prompted, dial 743-463-604. You'll be asked for your home or for your name prior to speaking. Remember, if you're joining by teleconference, please mute your phone before, to prevent noise interference until you are given time for public comment. Please state your name and item you are commenting on before speaking. Are there any public comments at this time?
There were no public comments submitted electronically. I don't know if there's anyone on the teleconference line that would like to speak on an item not on the agenda at this time?
Right. Now, we're going to public hearing. Each of you, the public hearing items will be conducted in the following manner. Staff presents the project, commission questions of the staff, chairman opens a public hearing, comments of presentation by the applicant, comments from the public, commission questions of the applicant, speakers of staff, chairman closes the public hearing, and commission discussion of action items. It's a little bit difficult here today because this is an item that I have a conflict of interest, so I have to step out. I live adjacent to this project, so I don't know if we need to do this to you on the first meeting, but maybe you can take the role of chair while I step out.
Stephanie, can you comment on that? We have two Commissioners remaining. Whether we have a quorum to continue this item?
Do you have a quorum? Do you have a quorum because today it's only three? Or actually, I'm sorry, Ms. Van Arsdale, I didn't realize that you had a conflict.
Yes. This was the one that came to me.
Yes, it just points.
And I live right against the property manager.
Yeah, we would at least need three Commissioners to vote on the item.
Okay.
For the next meeting, yes.
Sorry about that.
We could continue the items until December 15th.
So, if we could just have a motion for the record to continue due to the conflict, and then we'll...
I'll move that we move to the next meeting?
Yes, so we'll go ahead and continue item 7A to December 15th Planning Commission meeting.
So, do I second that, or does she have to restate that?
It's just made for the record. I'm sorry about that.
Second, so you're seconding it. Okay, and please vote, and I will abstain.
Can I just continue it?
Item number 7B?
I'm sorry.
Right, item number 7B, tentative tract number 35392, substantial conformance of map 20-004.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and members of the public. I'm presenting a substantial conformance request for tentative tract map 35392, map 20-004. The applicant is Strata Equity Group. The map is located on the north side of Thornton Avenue, south of New Setson, and east of Warren Road. The substantial conformance request for tentative tract map 35392 is to modify the alignment of Fisher Street, reduce the number of lots from 155 to 150, and adjust the lots to maintain 6,000 square feet, and we can figure the cul-de-sac radius and a modification of conditions of approval. A substantial conformance is proposed revisions to an approved map, and the revisions comply with the objectives, standards, and guidelines and conditions for the approved map. Map 35392 was originally approved by City Council on March 10th, 2009. It received several automatic extensions. It also received two extensions of times that the applicant applied for, and it is due to expire March 10th, 2022. The existing map was for 155 residential lots on 48.45 acres. The reason for the revision is the original street grid for Fisher, which is this street right here, was to run north and south, and so when the gas company wanted to put in a gas line, they put the gas line north and south as the road Fisher was proposed to be located. Subsequently, the map was submitted, yet not approved, and Fisher was actually at a curve here to intersect with New Setson at a 90-degree angle. And because of this, the gas line was going to be underneath private property. In order to adjust this, the applicant has resubmitted a new map that shows that there are some changes to accommodate the gas line, which in turn modify the streets that are to the east and to the west of Fisher Street. Here are the proposed revisions to the west side of Fisher. We can see that Street A, C, and D are shifted just a little. A is shifted south, C and D are shifted east, and this leaves an open space here. And so, these are the modifications that are proposed for the west side of map 35392. This is the east side of the map, and again, here we see the gas line, and so this is now open space, and the gray are the original street locations, and the red are the changes. So, we see that all of the lots here were shifted east. This road here was, the knuckle was removed, and there was some cul-de-sacs that were removed, and this is what is being proposed. And not only are the roads shifting, but the lots are shifting as well. I'm sorry, the lots. Additionally, there are conditions of approval that are being removed. Tentative tract map 35392 was originally approved as an extension of Solera Del Webb, which is an age-restricted community to the north. Polte Homes, the builder, is no longer interested in expanding Solera to the map. The applicant states that the development, and the development may be developed and brought to market more quickly if it stands alone. The applicant is requesting the removal of conditions relating to the senior citizen development, and is asking that conditions 25, 26 to 32 be removed. Additionally, the Engineering Division requested several conditions added to clear up any ambiguities and any deficiencies, which include changing some lots to letter rather than numbered lots to clarify the dedication of city, clarify lots are to be dedicated to the city as easements and open space, construction standards to Thornton Avenue, and requiring the LED fixtures on streetlights rather than the low-pressure sodium. And this would be adding conditions 106 through 113. Property owners and tenants located within a 500-foot radius of this project site were notified of the public hearing on November 19th, 2020, with a 10-day hearing notice in addition to a public notice in the press enterprise. As of the writing of this report, staff has not received any comments neither for or against this project. The Planning Commission has authority to review, consider, approve, conditionally approve, or deny tentative tract maps. The applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission determine the revisions to be in substantial conformance with approved tentative tract map 35392. Substantial conformance means that the proposed revisions of the approved map comply with the objectives, standards, guidelines, and conditions for the tentative map. The recommended action is that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number PC 2020-022, approving substantial conformance request for tentative tract map 35392, subject to the modified conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant was going to be on the phone to answer any questions as well.
Is the applicant on the phone?
Is there anyone on the line who would like to speak to this? Any applicant?
Hi, good evening. This is Rich Brasher, project engineer and representative for Strata Equities.
Thank you, Rich. Okay.
We ask you to turn down your livestream. It interferes with the phone.
And there's about a five-second lag.
All right, we have, sounds like we have the applicant and someone else who would like to speak on the matter. We will start with any questions from the Planning Commission first.
I do have a question. I'm afraid it's, sorry, should I give me open public comment?
We're opening public comment right now. Sorry about that.
I have a question about the gas line. Was SoCal Gas aware of this project, and if they were, were they not given a map? Like, it seems, I feel like that complicated the process. Is there accountability for that, or...
Let me try to answer that for you. So, basically, what happened is that the original layout of Fisher Road was north and south at 90-degree angle. When the gas line was being installed, the map was there, not recorded, but because it wasn't recorded, they cannot follow the new alignment of Fisher. So, by not being recorded, they had to go with what was recorded, which is the original Fisher alignment. So, that's why the gas line was installed at north and south orientation.
Are they also trying to remove the age restriction in that area as well? Could I know that's right next door to 55 and Over, and the whole project we're going to be discussing seems like they want to remove the age in all of them?
Those are the conditions that are proposed to be removed. They were numbered, and they are struck on your conditions of approval, and they're the ones that relate to the age restriction. Those are being asked to be removed so that it's just a family market, all-age, all-age.
So, did you have any other question regarding that? I had some questions regarding the senior. So, I have some real concern about removing the senior requirement. That whole area originally had been designated as senior community. I think that the Del Webb project has contributed greatly as a senior community to Hemet. Having been the city who sponsored the Housing for Older Persons Act, and being very diligent in where we were looking to put retirement communities in the city, and knowing the success of those, both the Four Seasons and Del Webb sold very, very well. So, the excuse of saying they'll come to market and sell faster, I don't agree with, and I think that Hemet needs more of those type of retirement communities. So, I have a problem with giving up that community as a senior community. So, my other question to that leads to, I talked to a few people in Del Webb, and they didn't, they weren't aware that this was going on. I know we have a 500-foot radius, but we have a project that's going to affect a whole community. It's not just adjacent to it building some more housing, it's adjacent to it building completely different housing. So, I just was concerned that more of the people in, or, excuse me, in Del Webb didn't know about it, and how it will affect them, and I would prefer personally to see this remain a senior community. And that's just a comment. Maybe the applicant would like to speak to that.
Rich, if you're on the line, you could go ahead and speak on the matter.
Good evening. This is Eric Flodeen, property owner and applicant with Strata Equity Group. Rich Brasher, the project engineer, is also on the line. I just want to maybe inform everyone in the chambers, two things. One is, there's about a 30 to 45-second lag between the video on the, you know, on the website and the telephone conference line, so that is making some of the, you know, fluid communication difficult. And secondly, the speaker volume, I have my phone turned all the way up, is very hard to hear. So, I just want to let you know, we're here to answer your questions, but there's some difficulties here, so we'll ask for your patience with that.
And Rich Brasher here for any questions?
Rich, okay, so let me try this here. So, I understand the Commissioner's concern at face value, just based on the information that was provided. However, there is, there's a history here that has to be understood and considered in association with this request. Our company entitled the Solera project. Our company entitled that project over 10 years ago. We then sold the, entitled the approved Del Webb, the approved Solera project, the tract map, to Polte/Del Webb, who built out the beautiful Solera project that's there today. They purchased that from us after we designed that basically for them. The intent of Polte or/Del Webb at the time, they're the same company, the intent of Del Webb at the time was that they were going to have a future phase of Solera that would be where this property, 35392, is. So, 35392 was envisioned at the time of approvals back then in '09, and when Polte was building out Solera, that 35392 was going to be an extension of or future phase of Solera. During the recession, when this project was being built out, Polte basically built out the beautiful Solera that you see today and closed shop. They, there is no more expansion of Solera. So, what happens now is that you have this remainder of 150 lots that don't stand alone as an active adult community. You mentioned, Commissioner, you mentioned Four Seasons and Solera. Those are successful active adult communities because of amenities they offer, and there's a scale needed to achieve that. So, anyway, I want to let you know that that's the evolution of this property, and so it's really important that this now, as this has transitioned, that it become a family, a traditional market community. It is not, I would, I just want to clarify, it was never, I don't think we ever represented that we could get to the market faster by changing, by changing from one housing type to another. It's really the history is why we are where we are.
And Eric, if I may add, you know, whenever Retro Di Amante was initially approved, it consisted of 31807 and 31808, which are the Solera project, as well as 35392 to the north, 35393 to the south, and also 35394, which is to the west of Warren. So, all those composite were to originally be the Del Webb community. Hence, they built a gorgeous 25,000-square-foot clubhouse. But then, as you mentioned... But then, as you mentioned, with the recession, Polte, at the close of the construction of Solera, said that's it, we are not expanding this retirement or this active adult community any further.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Also regarding the alignment of the gas main, yeah, the gas main was installed in the paper street right of way of Fisher Street. Looking at the configuration of Fisher relative to New Stetson, yeah, Fisher will need to curve to intersect New Stetson at a 90-degree angle. This tentative map was approved whenever Southern California Gas came forward to the city and suggested that they were wanting to install the gas main. We were aware of it. We had meetings with Jorge de Ojo as well as SCE and the city allowed SCE to go ahead and install the gas main on the paper, paper street right of way to conflict with the tentative map. But as noted, nothing had been recorded on the property, just the tentative map.
I have another question, if I may. The entrance into the project from Thornton, will that be your, let's see, I was trying to look at the other maps. I'm assuming that that will be, will have the, the Fisher as it winds around a bit and then it goes straight. So Thornton will go all the way through to the end of your project in the rect, or the triangle to the west. And then the properties that are the Del Webb properties to the south, are there any things that, that we think would be affecting the retirement community in conflict with a, with the family community? Maybe I'm asking staff that question as much as I'd be asking the applicant. Before the present housing goes out to Thornton, I just want to make sure there's some barriers there.
If I may offer, Thornton and Corte di Amante were constructed off-site to support a secondary access for Solera to the south. There are a few lots that front on that stretch of Thornton and so the primary access will be from the T-intersection, the future T-intersection, where currently there is just a knuckle of Thornton with Corte di Amante for those homes to the west of Fisher.
We're working on a map to go up on the screen here.
Another point regarding the existing Solera community relative to changing designations on adjacent properties from active adult to market rate. A 2017 substantial conformance was approved for 35393 to the south of Solera on the south side of Mustang, which removed that same condition. At the public hearing at that time, there were residents of Solera. Their main concern was that a school would be located within the project. That school has since gone away. It was actually going to be a combination of middle school and elementary school. And so those have now gone away. But their, again, their main concern was whether or not there would be a school on the adjacent property and having student traffic, either pedestrian or vehicular, going through their community.
Okay. Thank you. And when, when that went away, was that because the school is no longer requiring that? Or was it, why did that go away? Can you, I'm sorry, I don't remember that.
Yes, just, just in the past couple of months, prior to our submittal of our substantial conformance, which is also on the agenda for 35393, the representatives from Strata Equities were finally, after many years, able to get a commitment from HEMET Unified School District that they were no longer interested in those sites as potential school sites. It had gone round and round and round for a number of years with them being noncommittal. And then they finally were able to say, the district was finally able to say that they were not interested in those school sites.
Yeah, because you've got an elementary school right around the corner and a high school, but, thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry, you hogged a question.
Well, that was the only thing I wanted to comment is, I, I understand your concerns about the 55-plus, but also in the real estate as it stands is such a low inventory. This would be a huge opportunity, you know, be able to offer families places to live here. There's a lot of, a lot of people that want to move here and there's just not a lot of inventory.
Not a lot of inventory of either, is there?
There's a lot more 55-plus than there is regular.
All right. It's not a question for the applicant, it's more of a question for the long, long-term because it's, I'm looking at, from understanding between upcoming projects we're going to discuss, we're looking at almost a little over 1,100 homes that could be coming in in this area. And I noticed, I remembered the bridge right there that we had to shut down because the infrastructure on it was not able to hold the volume of people. And it just did kind of a quick patch on that and still, will it be able to handle the volume of people that are going to be moving right next to that bridge? Who can be using that bridge on a daily basis, 1,100 homes?
More than the patch. They did the major shutdown.
I just want to make sure, just ahead, when we look ahead with traffic and things like that.
Right. So each project as it comes through will go through the environmental assessment and identify all the different impacts that, that the project will have on the surrounding infrastructure, parks, streets, bridges, and so on. And each of the development will have an input, a cost input, in order to mitigate those impacts. So with 1,100 homes and each home construction will add to the improvements of those roadways and so on. So if they're not up to par at this point, as the development happens, you'll be collecting additional funds to improve those roadways to help assist that impact.
Wasn't, wasn't the construction, when they shut down Stetson last year, wasn't that, I think that was the bigger infrastructure improvement for that bridge?
Right.
They were shut down for like three or four months?
Yeah.
Any questions from the public that aren't here?
Is there anyone on the conference line that would like to have public comment on this item?
There are no other comments. Does the applicant have any other final comments?
Just primarily here to answer any questions the commissioners may have.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I don't have any other questions.
Do you want, do you want to make the recommendation?
I'd like to make the recommendation motion that planning commission adopt, planning commission resolution, bill number PC 2020-20024, I'm sorry, and planning, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. I'd like to make a recommendation that the planning commission adopt planning commission resolution, bill number PC 2020-022, approving the substantial conformance map of tentative track map 35392, subject to the modified conditions of approval.
I'll second. Okay. Looking at this 2 to 1. I would like to make the statement that I voted no because I still believe that keeping the senior requirement is important for development of senior communities in the valley. We have not, not too many that are new and I think we should encourage more senior communities. Okay, item number 7C. Track map number 35393, substantial conformance.
This is the map that is south of 92. The applicant, Strata Equity Group, the location is on the south side of Mustang Way and between Fisher and Warren on the north side of Poplar. The description is a request for substantial conformance for tentative track map 35393 to reconfigure Phase 4 to function independently from Phases 1, 2, and 3, which is being developed by another builder. No increase in density or number of residential lots is proposed and a decrease of 146 to 145 lots is being proposed with no dangers to the conditions of approval. A substantial conformance means that the proposed revisions to the approved map comply with the objectives, standards, guidelines, and conditions to the tentative map. Background for tentative track map 35393, it was originally approved by City Council on March 10th, 2009. It also qualified for several automatic extensions. There were two extensions of times that were requested by the applicant and this map is due to expire March 10th, 2022. There was also another substantial conformance approved in August of 2017 to add a 1.17-acre park and recreation area. Tenanted map 35393 was approved with option A and option B. Option A was 448 residential lots and eight interconnected open space lots to create a central for sale and a walking trails on 103.87 acres. This is the entire, the entire map, the way it was approved. But then also, there was an option B. At the request of HEMET Unified School District, tentative track map was approved with the option for an elementary and a middle school on 31.83 acres on the eastern portion of the property. That's this here. Phases 1, 2, and 3, which is here, would be the residential side with 294 residential lots and Phase 4 would be the elementary and middle school. There was a substantial conformance done in August of 2017, which reduced the lots from 448 to 440 and increased the open spaces from 8 to 12. And the reason was for the addition of a 1.17-acre park. The reason for the change is because the applicant had requested the age restriction to be removed for a all-age, family-oriented development. And because now it was going to be family development, now the park requirements have changed. This substantial conformance, here we see the, the park that was added, which eliminated eight residential lots. The current proposal. Lennar purchased the western portion of the subdivision, Phases 1, 2, and 3, anticipating the school to be developed on Phase 4. They proceeded with grading and construction plans. After the purchase, HEMET Unified School District sent Strata Group a letter that the site was no longer under consideration for school. This left Phase 4 available for residential development. The, the substantial conformance for Phase 4 revisions allow for Phase 4 to operate independently from Phases 1, 2, and 3, but continue with the connectivity that was proposed when this was going to be the 440 residential lots. That connectivity is right there. Here, we're emphasizing the changes to the eastern portion rather, here, Street M was going to come to a cul-de-sac when this was proposed to be a school. So now, what is being proposed here is Street O will be a cul-de-sac. This street will continue up to Mustang to create an access. And then we see a revision here because we can see where the lots also had to be revised in order to accommodate these changes. Further?
I just have a quick question because see how the lots squished down right behind, right there, next, like, they look really short, really shallow, but I think it's just because that line goes through there.
Yes. This line was just to emphasize that the road was going to be connect here, but the red lines denote the lots.
See that lot right under that green arrow? That one, that one right there? If that light, if that street goes straight, then that lot right there on the right where your light is, right there, is that very short? Does that still comprise a whole lot?
Yes, these still comply. This was just a rough, a little placement of these lines just to emphasize.
If I may, the black line is the old layout and the red line is the new proposed layout. So the red line, if you look at it carefully, it actually goes beyond that, where that point is. If you move it to the right a little bit, it's all of that. That's where the property line is. Oh, right in between, yes. So that's where the property line is vertical. So.
All of the green line.
Right. It's, so it's the red lines that you're looking for as a new alignment, not the black line. It's just black line shows a little bit darker.
On the southern portion of the Phase 4, we see where Street E was connecting to Phase 1, 2, and 3, but now it's going to turn and become part of Street I. And there's going to be home, a residential lot here. And then rather than I becoming a cul-de-sac here, it's turning to become part of Street J. And then the addition of a green open space here, which mirrors the connection to open space here. Also, I connects here to Poplar to create an access. And then there's an access here off of Fisher, which was in the initial map. We also, I also gave the commissioners a memo stating that the map that was part of this staff report had a numbering which the engineering department requested be changed to reflect where the Phase 1, 2, and 3 left off. So the numbering to these lots will be 296 to 440 rather than 1 through 145. And then also, engineering requested a letter from Lennar, who is a builder of Phases 1, 2, and 3, to provide a state, a written statement that they agree with the substantial conformance. Property owners and tenants located within a 500-foot radius of the project site were notified of the public hearing on November 19th, 2020 with a 10-day hearing notice in addition to the public notice and the press conference. As of the writing of this report, staff has not received any comments, neither for or against the project. I did have a conversation with a gentleman at the counter who was concerned with the size of the lots in Phase 4, but when we looked at it closely, we saw that the size of the lots in Phase 4, but when we looked at it closely, we saw that the minimum lot size was 5,000 square feet. They look a little smaller on the map, but they are the minimum size of 5,000 square feet. Hemet Municipal Code 70-133C gives the Planning Commission authority to review, consider, approve, conditionally approve, or deny applications for tentative maps. The applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission determine that the revisions to be in substantial conformance with the approved map. And the substantial conformance means that the proposed revisions to the approved map comply with the objectives, standards, guidelines, and conditions for the tentative map. The recommended action is that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Bill Number PC 2020-023, approving the substantial conformance request for tentative tract map 35393, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And do you have any questions of staff? No questions? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask the applicant if you have any statements you'd like to make for the commission.
Good evening, it's Eric Flodeen with Strata Equity Group. I am here along with Richard Brasher, the project engineer. We're here to answer any questions you may have. I think this one is pretty straightforward. Unfortunately, for the timing of this, you know, we just weren't able to get the commitment from the school district before, you know, Lennar started their process. You know, so really, we just, we got stuck in a calendar and we're just trying to, you know, now, you know, make the common edges mesh, you know, as they should. We think this is a pretty straightforward process and I appreciate your attention to this.
And you do now have that letter, that's what I read through. And have the letter from the school district saying that they don't need it.
Have that letter, you said?
Thinking you said yes, but.
The letter provided to the city.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? I do not. Are there any questions that can you find out if there's anyone online that would like to ask any questions?
Are there any members of the public on the teleconference line that would like to speak to this project?
This is Rich Brasher again. If I may note, on Sheet 5 of the substantial conformance tentative map, where the potential school site was shown, I put a line through that and added a note that says the school option is deleted based on letter from Hemet Unified School District to Strata Equity Group dated September 11, 2020. See Sheet 6 for implementation of independent residential option.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm that openly in this hearing. So my school board members don't get after me later.
Understood.
Okay. Are there any members of the public here that would like to speak on this matter? If not, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Just one question for Stephanie. Unless I didn't see it, we didn't, there's no letter from the school district in this at all. It's just a hearsay that they, we got a letter that they don't need a lot of that half?
Actually, I did receive that letter. Either Mr. Flodeen or Brasher emailed it to me. I inadvertently forgot to include it, but I do have a copy of that letter. It was emailed in an attachment.
Yeah, and this is actually okay because we do have a copy and it is available through a PR request through the city clerk's office, so it would be available to the public should anybody request it, even though it's not in the agenda.
We could also provide that letter to you at the next meeting?
Yeah. Make sure we're saved by.
You don't want to get talked to by the school board either, do you? Okay, what's your pleasure?
I move that we adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Bill Number PC 2020-023, approving the substantial conformance map for TTM 35393, subject to the modified conditions of approval.
Thank you.
I second.
Sorry about that. Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the General Plan Amendment, GPA 15-002, Page Ranch PCD Specific Plan Amendment.
Commissioner, this project will be presented by our consultant, David Leonard.
Good morning, Madam Chair, or good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Dave Leonard, as HP indicated, and I'll be presenting this case. This is the same applicant, as you have seen in the previous cases that are coming before you, Strata Equity Group. Also, their consultants, Pangio Land Consultants. This is located south of Stetson Avenue, west of the Seven Hills Development and Warren Road, and east of the San Diego Aqueduct. Looking at the aerial photo, there's certain things that we want to point out here. One is that the project is, the aerial photo was taken just before the Warren Road was constructed. The project you were just considering, which was 35392, is located right there, almost contiguous to this property. Drainage improvements have been constructed to the properties to the east, as you can see on the bottom of the property. And there is an earthen channel that is unmaintained and has a substantial amount of vegetation grown in it that would be remedied with the development of this project. The trees that are located about center of the project site is the site of a previous farmhouse and barn that were located on the property. This is a substantial project that required a subsequent viable impact report, a specific plan amendment to the Page Ranch Plan Committee Development Specific Plan, which is now identified as Ranch Odiomonte Specific Plan, and a general plan amendment to the city's general plan circulation element. We'll get into each of these as we go forward. All of these are required in support of the Tentative Tract 36841. A subsequent environmental impact was required. The city retained LSA associates to prepare the report. A notice of preparation to prepare the SEIR, or subsequent EIR, was issued on August 3, 2016, and then reissued on April 16, 2019. As you can see by the case number assigned to this, this project's been around a while since 2015. The notice of prep, after an initial review by staff, was sent out. Following that, substantial changes were made to the design of the project, which required a renotice of the notice of preparation. At that time, there were comments received from the Riverside County Flood Control District, the California Department of Fish and Game, Riverside Transit Authority or Agency, and Suboba Band, who are Indian. The notice of availability went through the 45-day public review period as required by the California Environmental Equality Act and concluded on May the 6th. One might wonder what happened going in May the 6th and December, we'll get to that in a moment. Final SEIR responded to the comments received, which was distributed before you this evening, and a final mitigation monitoring report program was prepared, which is included in the final SEIR. There are also findings of overriding consideration that have been prepared, and that's because of the, some of the findings that were issues that were identified as being significant without the ability to mitigate to a level of insignificance. This is why we are, what took place between May and October, the project was required to go through an SB 18 and AB 52 tribal consultation process, given the issues with COVID and the volume of workload with reduced staff that everybody is dealing with. We only closed that out in November the 5th, or October the 5th of this year. So that was done in order to finalize the final EIR, to respond to the comments, and to incorporate the mitigations that the Suboba Tribe was requesting. The sequel analysis identified a full range of issues, and the ones that were evaluating considered insignificant were air quality, except that nitrogen oxide exceeded the thresholds established by the state. Biological resources were found mitigated to a level of insignificance, as were cultural resources, geology and soils, hazardous materials, noise and vibration, project-generated traffic and circulation, emphasis on project-generated, utilities, and greenhouse gas emissions. Those that are determined significant are the loss of agriculture injustice and a mitigation measure to deal with that, air quality because nitrogen oxide exceeded the state thresholds, and cumulative traffic and circulation. So standing on its own, the project was fine with mitigating traffic impacts. When you add it to the level of traffic all through the community, all through the region, that was significant. And we also have some other twist to that as we go along. Therefore, a statement of overriding considerations was prepared for your consideration. One of the components of this review was Airport Land Use Commission review. The project site lies within Zones C and D of the Hemet Ryan Airport influence area. Mandatory water quality and infiltration basins are designed throughout the project site, and that coincided with the standards of the FAA. So there was a study required to address that, and it was, I called it Potential Berg Aircraft Strike Hazard Report, or the acronym being BASH. And that was reviewed and approved by the ALUC and incorporated in the conditions of approval as Conditions 146 through 162. This shows us the compatibility zones that affect the property. As you see in the yellow, that's Zone C, that's the more restrictive, overlays the proposed commercial area, and the residential areas remain in Zone D. The, I believe there's a five-acre minimum lot size for residential uses within Zone C, and about three and a half units to the acre under Zone D, that are permitted as being consistent with the Airport Land Use Commission plan. This exhibit shows the proposed water quality basins and filtration basins in orange, so that shows the area of concern to the ALUC. And the areas in blue just indicate divisions of drainage areas within the tract, and there's some areas in green that show, that are storm drains are proposed, but I don't think that's very apparent in this particular exhibit. Getting to what the plan amendment is actually doing, it's a proposal to eliminate the alignment of new Warren Road, we'll show that in a minute, the merging of Planning Areas 6 and 10, which are residential areas, and the creation of Planning Area 13 as a commercial site, and the extension of Mustang Way from Warren Road to Stetson Avenue. And here's the general plan designation for the site, showing the project site, the low-density residential of 2.1 to 5 units per acre. The overall density is 2.6, so that is consistent with the general plan. This goes back to create a context of the overall Page Ranch specific plan in this area in the yellow at the far west end of the project here is the project we're showing. I'm providing this for context for this exhibit, which shows what is approved. As you see, there's the new, this is the new Warren Road coming through the project site. Planning Areas 6 and 10 are shown in that location, and then there's an area 13. This is what is proposed, or this is the density that was proposed as part of the approved plan. And that shows Planning Area 6 being low-density, allowing 353 units, Planning Area 10 being low-density, allowing 391 units, and Planning Area 13, low-density, allowing 73 units. This is an important number. The approved number of units under this plan for this property is 817. The proposed plan consolidates those two planning areas, creates the commercial area, extends Mustang Way through the project site, instead of having the north-south new Warren Road. And as a result, the proposed unit count is 586. So this reduces the units from 817 to 586, but incorporates 19.7 acres of commercial The general plan amendment that's before you this evening is specifically to extend Mustang Way, as has been described, and to reduce the classification of Warren Road from a six-lane arterial to a four-lane secondary arterial. This has been analyzed and the traffic studies looking at different metrics of analysis, and has been found to be below the capacity limitations of the site and would operate in an adequate level of service. And I should add that I believe on the phone is our traffic engineering consultant who can get further into depth into that analysis. And then the other aspect of this, the general plan amendment is to establish the 19.69 acres of regional commercial. This is cross-sections of the difference of the streets. At the top is the existing standard for a six-lane arterial, and you'll see that it has the six lanes of travelways, or three in each direction, with a raised median. Below that is the secondary that's being proposed. This would not have a median per se, but I believe in the engineering conditions that are coming before you, there are areas where left-turn movements would have a median in order to find those turning movements. Tract 36841 is the proposed division of 245 acres into the 586 single-family lots. They, the minimum lot size is 5,000, but they extend all the way up to 10,990 square feet. Therefore, there's an average lot size of 64.34. And the related uses on 160 acres consist of parks, basins, and walking for sales. That consists of another 160 and a half acres and one lot for the commercial use. The related uses are defined as public and private parks and open space areas. I said that's 116.51, it's actually 64.89, as you see. The project includes 6.2 acres of off-site improvements, including utilities, drainage conveniences, and the west half of Warren Road along the project frontage. Here's the tract map, as we have been discussing. So you see Mustang Way extending through the project site, you see the commercial area, and the balance being the lots. This happens to show the phasing sequence of the site, beginning at the Warren Road frontage and moving west, and then the commercial area actually being the sixth and final phase. And that could change as the commercial market matures, and if there's a demand for it, then that could come sooner. There are a number of documents that are supporting this. I mentioned the draft subsequent EIR and the final subsequent EIR, but there's also the mitigation monitoring plan, the SEIR findings of fact, the specific plan amendment document, Page Ranch PCD Design Guidelines, which is a very important component of this project, and then the tentative tract map 36841. Under the Planning Commission authority pursuant to Section 90-986, you have the authority to recommend to the City Council approval, denial, or modification to a specific plan by an affirmative vote of not less than a majority of total voting members. There is a slight change from what may be printed in the agenda tonight, where it calls for an action, defines as an action by the commission as being final, it's actually a recommendation to the City Council. Also pursuant to Section 70-133C, to review and consider and approve, conditionally approve, or deny applications for tentative maps, as you saw in the previous applications. The design of the proposed project adequately conforms and is consistent with development standards and guidelines provided by the City of Hemet 202012 General Plan Land Use for the low-density residential category, because the overall density is 3.65 units per acre, the City of Hemet zoning and subdivision ordinances, and Page Ranch Plan Community Master Plan and Development Standard Design Guidelines. Regarding public notification, we did notice property owners and occupants within 500 feet. There was an advertisement in the press enterprise. We also reached out specifically to Betty Jeffries and Kathleen Clarkson, who had submitted comments very early in this process, so we wanted to keep them apprised. And then in addition to this. And then in addition to this notification, we had the public review of the EIR during the 45-day public review period. We do have some recommendations coming before you, but before I get to this, I want to talk about a few changes we wanted to make to the conditions of approval. On condition number two, there was a condition that was referencing the map, being the track map, going through an appeal process to the council. That's not relevant to this case because the whole project goes to council. Therefore, we are seeking the deletion of condition number two. Condition 11 just has an incorrect track number on it, it should be 36841. And then there's an engineering condition number 105, which calls for 25-foot setback, including the 12 feet of right-of-way, rather than the way it's written as 25 feet in addition to the right-of-way. And that would be making it consistent with the design standards of the specific plan. The condition 105 would have a 25-foot setback that includes, incorporates, the 12-foot public right-of-way, instead of 25 feet plus 12 feet. Therefore, the recommendation coming to you tonight is to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Bill as stated in the agenda, amending the Ranch of Demonte specific plan, amending the City of Hemet general plan circulation element, approving tentative tract map 36841, and certifying the Ranch of DeMonte specific plan subsequent environmental impact report. Also, that the Planning Commission adopt resolution, as stated in the agenda, recommending that the City Council approve a resolution, amending the Ranch of DeMonte specific plan, amending the City of Hemet general plan circulation element, approving tentative tract 36841, certify the Ranch of DeMonte specific plan subsequent environmental impact report, and direct staff to file a notice of determination with the county clerk. And finally, to approve Planning Commission Resolution Bill number 19-032, approving map 15-008, known as track 36841, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. With that, I would be happy to try to answer any questions you have. I know the applicant also has a presentation. They want them to you this evening? And like I said, we have representatives of Urban Crossroads and LSA online in case you have questions.
Thank you very much. Should we go? Would you guys have any questions of the presenter here yet, or would you like to go forward with the other presentations? Okay? Okay. Does the applicant have any more? Sorry. We're open the public hearing.
So we're setting up the applicant's presentation, and we will forward the slides as he makes the presentation.
I do have a question regarding ALC. I have a question regarding ALC, Airport Land Use question. Any discussions, and I don't remember seeing it, but this is a very long agenda, regarding the potential extension of the airport. I used to sit on ALC, and I know there's so many things that came up regarding that potential extension.
Analysis that was performed by the ALC Commission staff contemplated the extension of the railroad, oh, railroad, airport. And so that was a factor that was incorporated into the standards.
And that length of extension, that's where I was trying to go?
That length, I don't have that information at the top of.
Okay. I know there were several times we discussed different extensions, and there was often different lengths for different ways to accommodate airport traffic in and out. Okay, Mr. Brasher, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we have your slide up, so please go ahead.
Okay. Let's see. Just to give you some more background, I've been involved with Ranch of DeMonte, Strata Equities, and our business partner, Benchmark Pacific, since about 2003, back when Del Webb Solar was developed. During those years, there has been a succession of participants involved in Ranch of DeMonte, both on the private side as well as the public side. And from the past, we're certainly appreciative of the work of former Development Services Director Diana Eliano and Senior Planner Carol Kendrick. We're glad that H.P. Kang was involved as well during that time. Our submittal had to provide some continuity. Our first submittal was in 2015. We worked through a number of issues with staff to arrive at the current configuration. And more recently, we're especially appreciative of the work and perseverance of city staff and extensionist staff, again, including Mr. Kang, Solidad Cruz, Carisosa, Gabriela Hernandez, Steve Lariso, Mike Myers, and you, Dave Leonard. We appreciate you guys picking up where others left off to get the project to where we are here today. And on behalf of Strata Equities, I appreciate your consideration of this important project. And as the engineer for the project, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. There were a number of planning, planning conditions that have been revised over the last day or so. I want to make sure that those are included. I don't know if you can speak to that at H.P., if Mike Myers revisions have been incorporated into what's being considered today?
Yes, they have been incorporated into the conditions that are before the Planning Commission.
Okay. The remaining concern that we have is with condition number 75 regarding the extension of what we call Street C, which is an extension of, you know, runs on the west side of the park, down toward the southern property line. There is an existing drainage channel that runs east-west at the south end of the, south side of the property, terminating in a, let's see, if we can go further in your slides, and the slides there, let's see. Let's go to the overall number four slide. That's the Solara map. The next one will be the overview, the front page of the tentative map. There, you can see the large blank area, and where the cursor is, in the southwest corner. That's a large regional detention basin. That was constructed concurrent with Solara. The basin and the channel that feeds it were not maintained, so habitat has been able to grow there. And we're providing additional water quality features that flank the channel to the north. So Street C is ultimately going to provide access to the property to the south. You can see the darker gray area there is where future Street C will cross the channel to access the property to the south. Strata Equities own that property. The condition number 75 as it reads now is to offer up on the final map dedication of right-of-way for Street C to the south of what we're calling Street KK. We're proposing improvements only to that intersection and not any improvements to the south in that stretch of Street C from KK down to the south property boundary. We can dedicate right-of-way, but not provide any improvements. Again, the condition as it reads is to provide a 20-foot accessway specifically for channel maintenance, but because this channel has been allowed to develop sensitive habitat, there is no maintenance to be done on the channel at this time. So that's the part of that condition that we have protest for. I'd like to note also that new steps in running along the northern edge of the property, because there is no flanking property to the north that would develop the other side of the, the other half of the street, this project is settled with developing the full width of that six-lane arterial all along the frontage. So, and that's another basis for us not wanting to do any unnecessary pavement that does not serve any purpose for this project at this time. Again, we're certainly willing to offer up for dedication, the right-of-way, but wish to not provide any improvements within there at this time. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
How do you feel about that?
Well, actually, we have Steve Lariso, I believe is on the line, our city engineer, who can comment on that a lot more.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My counterpart, Mike Myers, has been working on this with the applicant, and based on the discussion that we've been having, the intention is to be able to provide access to the south. I think the request from the applicant is that there would really be benefit to the development by actifying, providing that access, but it does help for circulation throughout the community. So I'm just looking at the notes here. So, H.P., you said that the latest copy did incorporate the requested comment or condition?
That is correct.
Okay, because I printed this off from earlier, so.
So the condition 75 that was referenced by Rich is not the correct condition? So I'm trying to look for that condition.
Well, it sounds like they were agreeing to right-of-way, just not improvements. So that would help with the ease of the flow, correct?
The right-of-way itself is
That's correct.
Just a dedication, not actual construction. The right-of-way itself is just a dedication and not a construction. So I think the applicant is requesting that they don't do any construction at this point, but they're more than willing to dedicate at this point.
I don't know what that means.
Meaning that they will allow for that road to expand in the future and be constructed, but they're not willing to construct at this point as they're building the homes.
It would become an off-site improvement for the adjacent property to the south when it develops. So they would build from Street KK to the property boundary within the dedicated right-of-way to provide access and circulation to their property. And again, that's Strata Equities property at this time. You know, there has been no tentative mapping on that property, no design studies, but we recognized that this project would need to provide the potential for an access point across the channel to serve that property in the future. And that's why we are happy to provide the dedication of the right-of-way.
David, can you?
This is Eric Plodine, if I could just add, just I could just hit on one point. Street C, south of AK Street, provides zero benefit to track 36841. There are no, there are no homes or there are no lots fronting that portion of the street. The project doesn't even need that street because there are multiple access points from that corner of Street C and KK. It was because Strata has owned that property to the south, it was actually just thinking, you know, thinking into the future, you know, could there be a future access point for the, you know, adjacent parcels? So I just, again, it's not, we simply could have just left it off and just had Street C and KK just be a T-intersection, but because we're the same owner, we were looking ahead. And so this track map before you tonight, I think, is the fourth or fifth submittal to the city over the years, and the last two submittals, which probably span 18 months, I'm guessing, show exactly what the commission is looking at tonight, which is showing the notes that say future or offer of dedication, but the limit of proposed improvements is shown right there at the KK, Street C intersection.
As we had proposed, that street to the south was the first, the initial submittal in 2015 of the tentative map. Then there was the recognition that because of the habitat that's developed within that channel, that there would be extensive permitting and mitigation requirements to actually build the street to that point, and the recognition that it served no purpose within this track. So we knew that we did not want to cross the channel with the street, and also that we did not want to have a dead-end street that served no lots and build a cul-de-sac at the end that would be temporary until such time that the street was extended. So that's why we, and working with staff at that time, between 2015 and 2017, that we recognized that that was a nonessential stretch of street, and why not just take it back to the intersection of Street C with KK? And that's how it evolved to the point where it is today.
Okay. Mr. Leonard can add to that comment?
We have the different value sets between staff and the applicant about this stretch of Street C. They look at it as not important to the track, and no lots getting access from it, it serves no purpose to them, and they would just assume
Not have to deal with it. To the staff, it is critically important in terms of circulation to the property to the south. It's designated mixed use, which means a combination of offices and residential under the general plan. If we take away this access point, then we are now pushing all of the traffic out on the Warren Road instead of internalizing it, and therefore, on the street we're recommending reduction of right-of-way on, we're exacerbating further. The traffic analysis for this project assumes that that link is going to be there. If it's not, maybe the traffic analysis needs to be updated. But it's very critical to us, and the reason there's no change to the condition 75 is because the city feels it's important to include the improvement of that street with this tract that's located within the tract, rather than at the, have facing a potential that the city has to pick up the cost of making that improvement as part of development to the north because it's not on their property. So that's the concern that's there. The city is willing to receive an offer of dedication, reject the offer so that the city doesn't have to maintain it, but the dedication would still be there so they could take it at a future time. The city is also willing to look at a financing mechanism so that the street can be financed through some form of assessment of future property owners, rather than that being a development cost to front. So those are some of the options we're looking at, but we look at that as a critically important improvement to this track map.
So your compromise of them, I heard you say something about the dedication.
Okay, in lieu of constructing this street,
Yeah.
We could look at a financing mechanism through the subdivision agreement, improvement agreement, that would create a financing mechanism to build it when it's needed, in lieu of having developer construct it.
Is that, the city agrees to that?
The city would be open to that, yes.
So the city agrees to the dedication and not the construction?
Provided that there is a financing mechanism in place.
So simply put, the applicant will agree to dedicate the roadway and also put up funding for future construction of some form, whether it's through the bond, whether it's through the securities, but they wouldn't construct at this point.
Is that in this recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, now I understand. Sorry.
Are there any other comments from the applicant?
Well, again, the condition as it reads is to provide 20 feet of pavement from Street KK within the offered-for-dedication right-of-way down to the channel specifically for channel maintenance. You know, it's our opinion that this would, you know, that whenever the property is developed to the south, it would be conditioned on them constructing to the south, it would be conditioned on them constructing that stretch of street and going through whatever permitting is required for the crossing. So, one concern, a large concern I would have with any kind of posting of a bond or whatever would be that crossing of the channel and the mitigation costs associated with it, permitting costs, whatever structure is going to need to be there. So, and that was not addressed, you know, in our discussions.
So, when you're saying the cost of crossing, you're talking about the aqueduct?
Uh, no, the channel, the east of the channel that runs along the south side of the property, where the crossing being where the gray area is, the darker gray area, and the bottom center of the image that's on the street. So, if we were to provide funding for the cost of the street, would it just be up to the channel, or, and if so, there's only gap, or would it be all the way to the south property line, which would include the costs associated with crossing that channel? And because this project derives no benefit from that, and the right-of-way is to be provided, specifically to provide access to the property to the south, you know, we felt that that burden should be on the property to the south when a road's developed.
This is Eric Plodine, again, from the applicant, if I may. So, first off, this Street C obviously is not on the city's circulation element, certainly not a road on general plan circulation element, so it's not of regional importance to the city. I appreciate what this, I appreciate what the city staff is saying about future road necessity, but I want to clarify that TIA, the Traffic Impact Analysis for this project, for this project, for 36841, should not consider off-site, off-site, I'm sorry, project traffic going south. That's not how the project's designed, and that's not how the traffic impact analysis analyzed the project. So, I really believe this is coming from a point of view where what's going to happen when the project to the south develops? And I just feel like we're, we have a lot of what-if scenarios in this discussion, which are actually very expensive, very expensive, for Track 36841, to do anything related to either improvements, or as the city is suggesting, a finance mechanism. If we have to, I'm just using a number, if we have to, you know, post a bond for five-hundred-thousand or a million dollars worth of improvements, that's, you know, just for, you know, for five, ten, fifteen years in the future, it just, that doesn't seem fair either. So, why don't you give those perspectives?
If I can just interject, if you own the property to the south, when you're ready to build that, is that when you're ready to talk about those numbers, or is that what you're asking, not to do that until you're ready to build, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's what we're looking at, is not to talk about that until we're ready to build. However, this project, 36841, before you, would already dedicate the right-of-way so that that property wouldn't have to go out and get it, which, you know, oftentimes happens. And there may be, you know, maybe that project to the south doesn't even need this northerly property northern access. I don't know that answer, because it's not designed. We haven't designed a, you know, a track map, a site plan for that property to the south, so it's way off in the future.
If I may, the question here is that the, that connection is in the map, on the map of 36841. So, anybody who's coming into, in the future, south of this property, does not have, I guess, a legal right to construct that because it's not their property. So, at this point, what we're asking is the current property owner dedicate, put in some financial mechanism for that construction in the future. It doesn't mean that they need to construct at this point, but it just gives the city assurance that that connection will continue on to the south.
You're asking them to post a bond for the future development of the property, for the property to the south?
No, we're asking them to post a, some type of finance mechanism to improve that section of the roadway south of Road KK.
Well, again, if the right-of-way is dedicated, Strata, whoever owns the property to the south, would certainly have the right to be able to build that road concurrent with the need for that road, if there truly is a need for it, at the time that that property is developed. And again, with this map, that connection was provided just on the recognition to provide the opportunity for better circulation between the projects and to better serve Strata Equities property to the south.
So, is there a compromise that we want to look at? I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't want to stop anything, but it sounds like we're kind of at a impasse here.
Yeah, so, Steve Larissa, can you chime in on what other mechanism that we can apply?
Oh, the things that we've, we've looked at too, or I'm just throwing out as well, is bond funding with the development. And when I mean bond funding, I don't mean a security bond, I mean like a financing bond for that. Even if, if the other mechanism we would, to me, would be a deposit for construction of that, or some portion thereof, for when the south comes in and it's determined whether or not there's the circulation needed between the two tracks, which I believe there would be the need, but, you know, as the applicant stated, there is no certainty of what's happening to the south. But that could be an option too, of some sort of deposit-based system that would not require the entire amount, but at least a portion of it, so that way, when the south track came through, they wouldn't be fully burdened by it.
Eric Plodine here. Street C segment we're talking about is actually an off-site road improvement for the property to the south. It is an off-site street improvement for the property to the south. Oftentimes, and I'm sure it's come before the commission, before, where you have a project and has to go from point A to point B, and that project has to build certain length of street on property it doesn't own. And oftentimes, when we assist too in our line of business, you know, we have to go acquire that off-site right-of-way, which becomes very expensive, and sometimes you have people that don't want to, and then you go into the whole M&amp;D main discussion that nobody wants to have. So, there's not only the acquisition of the right-of-way, which is the first hurdle, then there's the construction. The construction part is actually easy, it's a cost, but it's easy once you have the right-of-way. So, here what we're talking about is facilitating the off-site, off-site, uh, street improvements for the southern project by agreeing today to dedicate the road right-of-way. The full, the full-width road right-of-way would be dedicated so that when that project to the south comes forward, it has to build off-site because that's what the city's going to require, it will have to then just construct the improvements within the dedicated right-of-way. That's, that's the, you know, and that's the view that we're, that we're coming from. And so, I'm kind of hearing this, you know, two different sides, and I'm just trying to explain that this is not an onsite improvement for this project, it's not even an off-site improvement for this project, it's an off-site improvement for the future southern property.
You're saying that, that basically at the end here, south of Street KK, that that part of it is all, it's a paper street, basically, that you're offering to dedicate, but not improve?
That's correct, that's our proposal.
And so, the unimproved area is, so, Street K is basically where the Street C intersects and ends. And the, and the improvement, unimproved part you're talking about is from right there at Street K, where it ends, all the way down to the property line? Does that make sense? Are you following?
Correct, that's correct.
So, um, South of C and KK, right? So, is, is that, and then, but what is that street? What is that street, that gray street?
That's the-
What is that?
That's the section we're discussing right now.
I know, but, so, people can drive through there or they can't drive through?
It's crossing over the water.
So, you just want to make sure that when the off-site gets built, we make sure that's taken care of, right?
Right.
That's what you, wait just a second, are you talking about this gray part?
Yes, ma'am.
That gray part, no.
No, not that map.
Right, we've got that one. So, you're not, HP, you're not talking about this, you're talking about this, it's this short block?
Correct.
So, it's this, this, sure, this part right here is what you're talking about, not this gray?
Actually, it does show it on that map, if you see it, that little gray area, David, if you could point out?
Oh, it's very short, see?
I see, I see.
That's the crossing.
It's crossing over the channel, so the gray is the channel.
And this is the property line.
Correct. So, we're just asking the property owner to build up to their property line at this point. So, dedicate, provide some type of financing mechanism up to their current property line.
Okay, so, I think the part that we have to figure out is the ladder.
Correct, the financing mechanism.
You are just, you are trying to say that they have to do that, and they're arguing that they shouldn't have to do that because that doesn't apply to this project, it's for future, future project.
Correct, but the entire stretch of that section lies within their current property.
So, like it's up into the, the property line is all?
Back bends is at the end of the project.
So, like finish the project? Why don't you want to finish that part? I don't mean to make it so simple, it just, it seems complicated but simple at the same I guess because of the, the budget, right? Your, is it Rich that was telling us, or Eric?
It's Rich. So, if I can make a suggestion, so it looks like we have some additional discussion that needs to occur offline, so my suggestion is to continue the item till next meeting, to December fifteenth, and then we can hash out this condition portion, and then we'll bring it back for your consideration.
Okay, and then I just have one question, where is the Dilworth property?
Dilworth property?
To the south, so, right there. So, is there any urgency that we're not aware of that would cause great consternation or with the applicant?
On the city side, there's not a deadline that we need to meet. It just gives the opportunity for staff and applicant to, we discuss the issue and bring it back for your consideration.
Okay, motion, there are motions to do that? To keep the public hearing open?
Yes, but if we could just ensure that there's no one else on the line before we kind of go into the motion, please.
Okay, is there anyone else on the line who has any comments on this issue, this agenda items, excuse me? Anyone in the audience, anyone else with light speed? Okay.
I have a question more for staff. In the midst of that, it said because of the expansion that we'll be replacing the LOS level of service and changing it to VMT, vehicle miles of travel? So, what is that entail, does that entail anything at all for the city and certain restrictions, or, I mean, I don't understand what that means, that we're changing it from LOS to a VMT by that development?
So, I could have David explain that a little further, but basically, the LOS is the standard that we used in the past, level of service, so it grades all the intersections based on letter grade, A, B, C, and so on. Whereas it goes down, it's second normal grade, at a DEF, you're looking at a very congested intersection. But now, the state has changed that into vehicle miles traveled, VMT versus level of service, so it's a different type of calculation, and if you could go into that further.
The level of service, of course, looks at congestion situations on street networks. The VMT, vehicle miles of travel, looks at distance of trips, and they do it based on criteria that's far more complex than LOS, that's established by WRCOG. And we are right now developing thresholds and other criteria to bring back in ordinance establishing VMT guidelines for the city. This was the very first project to be analyzed under VMT, and we did it kind of as a hybrid of using both LOS and VMT analysis, because the state law changed last July the first, and we had to include a VMT analysis. What that does is look at the miles of travel that are generated by this project for various activities. And in this case, because of the location of the project being kind of out, on the outside of town or towards the, not in the urban core, that VMT analysis is what tripped up the average day, or not average, vehicle mile of travel higher than the average that's citywide. And therefore, that's how we got into the significant impact on cumulative traffic. So, that was generated by VMT. We still have to do LOS because the HEMIT general plan is based on LOS, we have to look at it from that standpoint to determine consistency with the circulation element. So, now, we're going to be doing both for a while until they ultimately merge together. You're going to be seeing a lot more and learning a lot more about VMT very shortly.
So, with that, the street that we're discussing, that is, does that have anything to do with the VMT?
VMT is a ten-thousand altitude, ten-thousand-foot altitude analysis of the circulation system. It doesn't get into the local street system, as we've been talking about the extension of Street C.
Like, we'll continue this so we won't close the public hearing? Would you like to have a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
I, I move that we continue this, what is it, item, until December fifteenth, is that how I say it?
Just a second.
Seventy, sorry, got it, sorry.
Okay, we'll take this up again then. At some point, I will probably call you, have some questions regarding the right-of-way to the railway, hope for a future metro link along there, which this follows, so. Okay, item eight A.
I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Item eight B.
I have nothing to report.
Item eight C, future business- The items, the CUP for Raising Cane's and variance for puff-time tobacco.
These are items that will be coming before you. Raising Cane's is one of the fast food restaurants that are being serviced in the city, so we'll bring that forward to you. The puff-time tobacco was an item that you've heard in the past, but we had some concerns about the location of the puff-time or the tobacco store with a limited, a thousand-feet separation. So, we went back and talked to the applicant, and there was some discussion about a possible variance, so the applicant submitted the variance application, we'll be bringing back the variance as well as the condition use permit for that.
When we talk right through that- When we talked right through that, I think that was a lot of healthy discussion.
And then, we have also a seven days' warranty conditioning use permit coming before you with the alcohol sales proposal. Okay. So, Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Beemstuffer?
I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Lenky?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Commissioner Van Arsdale?
Nothing to report, but I would like to call your attention to the fact that Commissioner Worth's name has been spelled differently in the report. Actually, leave the E off. So, just, just a note because it looked like it was, his name was written under there for signature, so just, John's defense as he's absent, I want to show you that name was spelled wrong.
We'll make sure that his last name is correct.
Okay. This meeting will be adjourned.